Welcome to this meeting, the Healthy Communities and Adult Social Care Scrutiny and Policy Development Committee. I'm not sure, do we need to go through the housekeeping arrangements? Are people happy with, you know, if there's an emergency or you need to use the toilets?
Happy, Chair.
Are we any apologies?
Apologies from councillors, Talib Putain and Abdi Sam Mohammed.
And we've got Diana standing here for Talib, Chair.
Any items that we, well, we need to exclude either the public or the press, or both? No? Any declarations of interest? Before I move on to the minutes of the last meeting, I just wanted to put to you a slight change in the order. We have, I understand, three members of the public wanting to ask questions, two of which relate to item eight on the agenda, the Adult Disfluencing Cleft-Lipped Palate Service Report. And I propose to take those two members of the public with their questions before we start that, well, at the start of that item on the agenda. However, we do have a third. So if we move on to item six, to receive any questions or petitions from, first of all, I'd take it we haven't had any petitions, but to receive any questions from members of the public. And I understand it's Sharon Nelson.
Sharon Nelson from Sheffield Save Our NHS.
Okay. Are you okay to use the microphone? You press the...
Yeah.
Yeah. Just speak from there.
Yeah.
On the right hand side.
Press the button.
Is that working? No, the button on the right. And I'll hand over to you to put your question, Sharon. Thanks.
Question out, and then just to say very briefly what the background to it is. It's a question from Sheffield Save Our NHS concerning the South Yorkshire Integrated Care Board. The South Yorkshire Integrated Care Board are going to take responsibility for all health and care decision making for all South Yorkshire local areas in July. And the board membership should, amongst others, include councillors from each local authority, representatives from social care, mental health, public health, community health, primary care, acute health, carers and trade union representatives. Also, private sector providers of NHS-funded health services should be ineligible for board membership. I should say, that's not all what exists now, but what has been put as a resolution in some other areas, like Doncaster Council, which has passed it recently. Our questions are, will Sheffield Council support the above proposals to demonstrate there's accountability to the public, patients and staff, to ensure openness and transparency in the SYICB decision making, including public access to board papers and board meetings, and allow public questions? And also, will the Healthier Communities and Adult Social Care Scrutiny Committee ask the Integrated Care Board what is happening with regard to allowing such public access and accountability, and also to determining the composition of that board? So what's happened, it's come to our attention that the boards in the other areas of Yorkshire have all agreed to have their, hold their meetings in public, with the right of the public to ask questions and to engage in public consultations. But campaigners have not been getting any response from the South Yorkshire ICB. Nora, who many of you have spoken to in the past, from Barnsley Save Our NHS, has been ignored, basically, when she's tried to contact the organisation. And so, you know, we're not being able to find out what's going on. And I think it's essential such health bodies aren't able to operate secretly without any public questioning and consultation. And the, you know, the new legislation does allow the Integrated Care Boards to largely to determine their own composition. And I think it's important then that, you know, bodies like campaigners, trade unionists, et cetera, and councils, you know, discuss openly about who should be on there, because I think most of us wouldn't want private healthcare operators, companies, to be having representatives on our local board, like they have in some areas, you know, like in Bath, where they've got Virgin on the board. So I wondered if, you know, the Scrutiny Committee could perhaps liaise with the ICB and, you know, find out a bit more about what's happening and, you know, move towards a position where, you know, people are allowed to go to meetings and they will take notice of, you know, what members of the public are saying.
Thank you, Sharon. Yeah, the issues that you mentioned with regard to the development of the integrated care system for South Yorkshire has been subject to discussion at this scrutiny meeting. I think it was the last Book One.
All right.
Scrutiny meeting, we discussed it quite in depth. Some of the concerns that you mentioned were part of that discussion. The outcome of that particular meeting of this scrutiny committee was that we decided to set up a scrutiny ICS liaison group consisting of a few, one or two members of this scrutiny committee, the purpose of which was to monitor how the South Yorkshire integrated system develops. And there were a set of recommendations at the end of that particular scrutiny meeting, some of which touched on some of the issues you mentioned. So what I'd suggest is that we've taken note that your question's been recorded.
Right.
What I'm suggesting is that we bring that to the ICS liaison, scrutiny ICS liaison group, which in actual fact were due to meet on Tuesday, the 1st of February, so next week, essentially. If members are happy that that's where we progress with that.
Right.
And we will, as is normal practice, we'll provide you with a written response anyway.
Right. So we will get something sent to Somes about what's happening on this.
Yeah, I'll just bring Emily in, just to see what she wants to add.
I was just going to say, I can also send you the minutes from the meeting where the scrutiny committee talked about the development of the ICB. And it did mention the issue about private providers shouldn't be on NHS boards and the importance of local accountability. So, and we did pass that on to be considered as the ICB was developing. So I'll send you...
Right, so they're considering that, but it's not yet been agreed, is that what you're saying?
That this scrutiny committee made a...
Well, they've agreed here, but not necessarily agreed with the ICS, yes?
Yeah.
Right.
Can we just bring in councillor Ruth Milton?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just firstly to declare a non-percevalary interest, although not current with this campaign group, in that I was the secretary of this group prior to being elected last year, so just so you know that. And that although Sharon and I share the same surname, we're not related as far as we know. It's just a coincidence, so just for the record, that is. And just to say as well to Sharon and Sylvia, who have kindly come in to ask these questions, that there was a motion, a resolution passed at full council in December, which was partly authored by myself and added to by others, which did put some of these things down with a resolution to write to the chief exec of the ICS board. So I presume that has happened and that...
So that's at the full council day.
And that letter has gone. So you can find that in the monthly minute book on the council website.
Yeah, yeah, we'll look up those minutes and also the minutes of the meeting, two meetings. Oh, right, yeah. That would be great, if you could send them, so I could find them.
So, thank you, thank you, Sharon.
That's all, I say, all the details out there, I've been told, and then you will contact again. Yeah, Sylvia, what is it you say? Sylvia is saying, are you allowed to stop to listen to the discussion today? And I think the discussion will be the last, you know, previous meeting, I think that's what they're saying. Not that they're having the discussion today, that it would already be the discussion which we really need to look at and see where we are with it. Thanks.
Can I ask you to press the button on the right hand side, turn the microphone? Thanks, obviously. Members, so... Emily's just reminded me I've skipped over a minute, so we've said page nine. And I'll try and take these in one go. So if for matters of accuracy, or any items arising from the minutes, or action points. So, can I ask you anything on page nine? Anything on page 10? Page 11? Page 12? Page 14? So can we accept the minutes? Okay. Nods all round that. Page 15 on the agenda packs, which is a report that we decided as a committed to including the work programme as a, you know, to bring us up to speed in what is out there, essentially, and have something of a discussion about green prescribing. So I'll hand over to Emma Dickinson, who, can I ask her to just introduce his, oh, well, could, I'm not sure whether it's...
Sharon, can I have a session?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what I'm going to suggest, if that's okay. And, sorry, before we do that, making sure that everybody can actually log into the audio system. To speak, you press, to stop speaking, you press the right hand button. Over to you, Emma.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you very much for asking us to come and talk today. I'm Emma Dickinson, and I work in the People Portfolio here in the council in commissioning, and I commission community wellbeing. And I've led on the report, but very much in partnership with colleagues, John from Parks and Countryside and Rowan Longhurst, who couldn't be here today. And I've invited some partners to come along as well and talk around and give members a really broad understanding of what green prescribing is. So I'm going to ask colleagues to introduce themselves first, and then we'll take you through the items. So Sue, do you want to introduce yourself first?
Thank you, Emma. I'm Sue Pearson, I come from Healy City Farm.
Thank you. John?
John Dallow from Parks, Woodlands and Countryside, as a woodland project officer.
Thanks. Amy?
I'm Amy Simcock, I'm head of engagement at the Sheffield and Botherman Wildlife Trust.
Thank you.
Karen Bowden, I'm a green and blue prescriptions development officer for the Wildlife Trust.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lewis Bowen, Health and Wellbeing Officer at Volntracht in Sheffield.
That's great, thank you very much. So just to give a bit of an outline, I'm going to just whizz us through the paper to remind people, I'm sure you've done your homework, but just to remind people what the paper said. And then John is going to touch on what the councils, Parks and Countryside do in supporting this. And then Sue is going to talk briefly about, oh, I'm going to ask Lewis first. Lewis is going to talk about what some voluntary sector organisations do, and then Sue is going to talk about what the farm do, and then Amy and Kieran are going to talk about the Wildlife Trust. Hopefully, we'll chug through at a pace so that there's more than enough time for people to ask questions and have a discussion. If I'm taking too long, Emily, give us a bit of a nod. So, as I said, this is a joint report, I very much facilitated it, and I want to say thank you very much to colleagues and contributions from partners. So just give that overview. And I've said, there's quite a lot of information in the report, but I have put a number of links if people want to explore some information further. So I think broadly, it's good to understand that there's a really wealth of evidence and understanding that community wellbeing and connecting people into things within their community really help their health and wellbeing. And actually, in reality, most people's health and wellbeing is really impacted on the circumstances of where they live, work and experience life. So many things impact on our health and wellbeing. It's our education, it's our jobs, it's our friendships, our networks, our engagement and connections within the community has a really huge impact on our health and wellbeing. Evidence suggests it's about 20% that the NHS and medical interventions actually have on our health and wellbeing. And we're really lucky in Sheffield that we've got a really long history of working with our voluntary sector partners to support health and wellbeing. And, you know, they have worked alongside primary care for over 10 years, actually, in Sheffield. So social prescribing is not actually new. It might be a relatively new term that we use, but it's not really new in Sheffield and something that's well embedded. And the council funds community wellbeing to approximately one and a half million. That's a programme called People Keeping Well. And you may or may not have heard of that term, but our, the organisations that we work with, not just the farm here as one of our partners, but organisations such as SO, Manor Castle, Darnall Wellbeing, Woodhouse Community Forum, hopefully I've given everybody enough of a flavour to recognise that what your area is there. And they work alongside primary care, taking referrals, and really having a trusted conversation with individuals to connect them back. Oh, I can see Diana smiling there, because we've had many a conversation about People Keeping Well. Thank you, Diane. And alongside that, alongside what the council has been doing for a number of years, very much in partnership with the voluntary sector, NHS have recently funded a role called Social Prescribing Link Workers. And that has recently come into the system. So over the last three years, primary care have actually invested in social prescribing link workers. Quite often, that is alongside the People Keeping Well community partner, but in other instances, it could be somebody like Sheffield Futures, because they want to work with young people, or Age UK, because they're particularly interested in supporting their older population. So that's all, just a whizz through and a background. Green prescribing, green prescribing has, I think, floated through with many a different type of terminology. So for some people, it means doing stuff outside, outside or in water. And actually, I think nationally, it's settled on a definition of connecting with natureness. And that connecting with natureness is really what is about improving your health and wellbeing. And just about 18 months ago, NHS nationally decided to fund seven areas to do test and learn sites for green prescribing. And our integrated care system for South Yorkshire and Basalaw led on a partnership across South Yorkshire for our area, and was successful in getting one of those seven. So we're really lucky to have been able to build on what we have been doing in Sheffield for some time. So that programme, led by the ICS, is to develop, was to develop some insight, and Kieran's actually, Kieran and Amy's, the Wildlife Trust, led on that insight. So I think it's really useful to hear about that today. And there is going to be some workforce development. There have been a number of grants, and 12 organisations in Sheffield have benefited from those grants, the farm, the farm, no, I couldn't remember, apologies, Sue. But there are lots of different organisations in Sheffield benefited from those grants, with probably another two pending as well. And there'll be quite a longstanding evaluation to feed back into that. So I've given a whistle-stop tour. I'm going to turn to John now to talk through, and then our partners are going to talk through really some of the more interesting stuff and what happens on the ground.
So thanks, everyone. So John Dallow from Parks, Woodlands and Countryside, I suppose it's really nice to be here talking today, because obviously we've had the last two years with Covid and the like, the sort of importance and role of green space for wellbeing has been really clear across the city. You know, we've, we're lucky enough as Park, Woodlands and Countryside to manage and look after a lot of that land asset. Obviously, that's a lot about the actual physical place, but it's also about working with the communities and the organisations that use those. You'll hear different stories from the different organisations who work with us, enhancing and improving those spaces. But I really think, if you almost think of your own personal reflection, how green space has become so important for us. And I think we've all got a personal story, and people like the Woodland Trust many years ago told us that we're lucky enough that most people in Sheffield live within 20 minutes walk of a wood. East, west, north, south, we've seen an increase of people using green space. And I think that connection with wellbeing and humans. We know from the paper and Green and Open Space Strategy that tries to thread the different partners and organisations together, that Sheffield is this amazing green city and amazing green asset. It's about biodiversity, it's about nature, the outdoor city, there's an economy there of organisation groups, recreation business. But it is, you know, ultimately, in the paper, it talks about that, it's for the people, it's for wellbeing. Again, what becomes really interesting there is you look at things like the State of Nature Report and the Nature Emergency, one of the things we really need to do is engage people in understanding that natural environment. And a great, again, green social prescribing can be a great way of actually experiencing these things and doing these things. So obviously, we're lucky, we are the, one of the land managers of this green and blue space, you know, the hills, the meadows, the woods, the parks, the canals, the rivers. There's an audience of more people that use it, more clubs, more groups, more charities, businesses, all, a whole community of Sheffield who use it. We sometimes, you know, use this term, the outdoor city now, to capture that and the different people within that. The People Keeping Well framework's a really exciting opportunity to work with those community anchors. And I suppose that for us as, you know, the land manager, we've got two main things. We're trying to maintain that asset, to make it physically welcoming, a safe place, maximise its biodiversity value, maximise its community value, and actually welcome people in and engage them. We talk of a thing called a Sheffield standard, which is our sort of physical accessibility standard within that. You may have also heard in the, you know, seen in the news before that, there's things like green flag that we also have on some sites. And we look at those accreditations and awards, so people can feel safe and welcoming. There's a raft of information that, you know, people know around, often we talk about growing people's confidence, do they feel safe? Is it accessible, but then is it used? So, you know, when we look at green prescribing, we're not just talking about the physical backdrop of the city, we're talking about making sure those spaces are used, making sure local people use them, love them, enjoy them, cherish them, and they can even go full circle and help us maintain them. So within this community of people today, we've also, say, got the 65 friends of groups across the city, who are also acting as champions for these wonderful green spaces, not only helping us manage them, but also helping to breathe the new custodians and bringing wellbeing. So it's one of these amazing opportunities where it brings benefit to everyone. There's the lovely map in there from our favourite places, if you saw the little diagram, which I think really captures some of the wonderful things you can do here. I was in an education meeting this morning, and one of the threads we talk about is this wonderful concept of a natural curriculum for the city. So if you lived near a canal, you fished; if you lived near an allotment, you've grown; if you live near an ancient woodland, you know, you've been to the woods, you've seen the bluebells; you've dropped on a bike trail or gone for a run, or you've been up to Gredo Woods with the Wildlife Trust and done some sort of activity. So that's really, it is all about looking at your local landscape and what can you do that's good for you. The thing, obviously, as an authority, the challenge for us is quite simple in some ways. If you look across the city, and we start to allude to this in the report, you know, it's not the same everywhere. We have high-quality green spaces, but if you took a map of the toilets provision in parks in the city, you'll see it's currently biased to some of the western sides of the city, which is where we know, again, if we put the data and the graphics about levelling up and activity, we know there are more people using the outdoors for health, wellbeing, recreation. In the west, in the south, there's a reduction in that, in the east, in the north, in the south-east. So obviously, toilets, cups of tea, I've become renowned to talk about brews, views, loos and something to do, but that brew and loo is essential, it's one of those things that really knits that return, repeat activity, that friendly face. So one of the things that, one of our challenges is, we have got sites which we think are clean and accessible, but how do we make sure there's toilet and activity provision across the city? And that could be used by ourselves or our own rangers, or more importantly, working with these community anchor organisations. So on there, you'll hear some of the lists. I'm busy working on a site at Parkwood Springs, and I'm very excited to be building a toilet there. We're also building lots of other things and trails and the like, but it's really exciting just to bring a toilet and a cup of tea there. We've also got places like Shavuk Visitor Centre, as well as, you know, the sites in places like First Art Centre, Woodland Discovery Centre, and even then working with partners out into the Peak District, where we're working with the National Trust, Peak National Park, trying to bring this network of green opportunities together. Another thing we do is a lot of trying to capacity build, and that's maybe working with communities or working with the organisations, and I'll shut up and let the other people speak, but how do we together animate this place and make sure that people get lots of different opportunities to engage, you know, positive activity for wellbeing and green space? From toddler groups to health walks, you'll hear different things. So, you know, there is a levelling up agenda, because there is inequality in use across the city. We are in this oasis of green space, blue space, wherever you live. So it isn't that it's inaccessible, but again, if you, we've got some amazing projects happening, but if then you look across the city, at times, it's hotspots not rolled out everywhere. So that's one of the challenges, us as green space managers, working with these groups to make them better, and then that levelling up, so everyone has equality of opportunity.
Thanks, John. And I think John has, you know, articulated much more eloquently why we've come here together in partnership from different parts of the council, because we both, you know, we both need each other to move the agenda forward, and it's so important. So I really appreciate that, John. I mean, when I was asked by Emily to lead on the paper, I was like, oh no, I'm going to get Parks and Countryside, they're going to be way better than me. So Lewis, I'm going to talk, I'm going to turn to you, just to give a bit of a flavour around some of the real things that happen.
Yeah, I'll do my best. So, hi, hi, everyone. I'm Lewis Bowen, and as I mentioned, I'm from Volntracht in Sheffield. I'm briefly going to touch on VAS and what we do. So we're an infrastructure organisation, and so we support the voluntary sector in the most inclusive and transparent way that we can. As an infrastructure organisation, we can act in a lot of different ways really to support the development of the voluntary sector. Some of those are leading multiple bids or supporting with grants, such as the Green Social Prescribing Programme. We often broker and work jointly with statutory organisations, such as the council, to get the most for communities. And we also just generally support the VCS to showcase their impact and show the depth and the breadth of support that the voluntary sector provides here in Sheffield and then across the country. And I'm going to talk about a couple of organisations that are delivering green social prescribing here in Sheffield, but I must say, it's just... But I must say, it's just the tip of the iceberg when it comes to green social prescribing. As John mentioned, Sheffield's very lucky. We do have a lot of organisations that deliver some great green social prescribing programmes. So you have to apologise, I am just going to read off this paper, so I'm trying to make it as engaging as possible. But my first organisation to talk about is Fairvale Community Hub, which is a great organisation based in the north of Sheffield. Fairvale Community Hub works with all backgrounds, but specialises in supporting the Pakistani and Roma communities. The work that they do is great. It breaks down a lot of cultural barriers and gives access to nature that people perhaps wouldn't have access to before. So their project that they deliver is weekly nature walks that have a theme around getting the outside, getting the most out of the outside. So whether that is noticing things that are new to you, wood skills, all that type of thing that perhaps people wouldn't have had exposure to before. They also offer a wraparound support by their community health workers. So not only does it expose people to nature and get more people outside, there's also a wider public health impact that the programme has, addressing some other health inequalities that those people may face. I've been there and I must say it's great to see the smiles on people's faces when they discover new things for the first time. It's really enjoyable to see. Another project I want to discuss is Grow Sheffield. Grow is a youth development charity here in Sheffield. They support people 16 to 25 who are a bit further away from the job market than they would like to be. So Grow support people through nature-based youth development programmes that have a focus on getting outdoors, but then also supporting people into work. It's a really great programme that combines nature and job skills and the understanding of life really. People on that programme go for an eight-week journey with Grow, they develop a whole wealth of skills. And again, there's a wider impact that addresses mental health issues that those young people may be facing and other public health issues that again, have been exacerbated, I think, due to Covid. The last organisation I want to talk about is the Terminus Initiative that is over in Lowridges. They're a small organisation, but have had such a wide impact with their Love Nature walks. I used to go on those Love Nature walks with a couple of people that I used to support. And the impact that those people, that it had on those people's lives was massive. Just to give a really quick case study, one woman that I took on the walk, she hadn't been outside for two and a half years. And this was before Covid. So when Covid hit, it was going on three years before she went outside. But through those nature walks, she rekindled her love, let's say, with nature and understood that it's safe outside and there is kind people outside. And that, that, that one little walk she went on once a week was enough to empower her to become an active member of her community and access more groups. So I hope that little case study just shows the power of nature and the power of green social prescribing. I know that was just a little bit of an insight into green social prescribing, but what I would invite you to do is have a bit of a research on your own. Sheffield, as I mentioned, has a wealth of voluntary sector organisations and green social prescribing is just one arm of the voluntary sector support that's here in Sheffield. And I think it's great that we're here today to talk about green social prescribing. But there's also a wider issue in terms of resourcing the voluntary sector to be able to do some more great work and more community, community creation. Because the voluntary sector is really underfunded and we need that long-term resource to be able to carry on doing the great work that we're doing. But yeah, that was my piece and I hope it gave some insight into green social prescribing and the voluntary sector here in Sheffield. Thank you.
Thanks, Lewis. And I think it is really useful that Lewis, given such highlight of actually some real grassroots organisations that reach into communities, turn now to Sue at the Farm, who obviously looks much more like a green organisation.
Thanks Emma, yes, thanks for inviting me along today. Yes, Healy City Farm, we turned 40 last year, so the farm's been a part of the Sheffield landscape for some decades now. And we were lucky because during Covid, managing farms, animal care, growing local food were protected occupations. So we were allowed to keep that going all through lockdown. And actually Boris did allow us to go out for our daily exercise, didn't he, even in the lockdown? So we did have people walking their dogs and jogging around the farm and enjoying that space. Just to sort of place it in context, in my business plan for the farm, we deliver against four key outcomes. And one of which is improving mental and physical health and wellbeing. And there's a variety of different ways in which we do that. And green prescribing, growing green prescribing is a key aim within that programme. So I've got a team of 45 people employed at the farm now and probably twice as many regular volunteers. I've got a team of local food growers, gardeners who manage a network of community gardens across the city. I've got my little map. They do align with quite a few of our areas of deprivation in the city. So they're not in the posh side of town, you know, we're in Hansworth and Darnall and Manor and First Park. And just to give you a few sort of, I think something to bring it to life as Lewis did. We work with the New Beginnings Project at VAS with refugees and asylum seekers. So that's a well-chosen referral route for not only helping people find their place in Sheffield when they've been housed in a particular part of town. You know, unless you're going out wandering the streets and looking for yourself, you're not going to know where the allotment projects are or where the nearest community garden is. So we've got some lovely stories there about people from other countries who they're not able to work or while their status is being determined, they need something to do, they need to be engaged. And why not take them into a garden and help them do some food growing? So then the animal care side of it, I don't know whether you've heard of the Care Farming Movement. This is where even larger, regular commercial farms have people that come along to engage with the animals. And we call it animal therapy and we developed a project a couple of years ago called Farming Comes To You. We did it first, taking goats into care homes and letting the residents there have an interaction with some of the smaller animals. And I guess we're at the stage now where I'm bringing together the sort of gardening, growing, food production side, which is well embedded. And it connects to diet, nutrition, health and access to food. So a lot of our produce that we grow, if we can't sell it through our normal food markets, we donate it to food banks like Grace Food Bank and the Gleedless Valley Food Bank just up the road. And I'm bringing that together with the health and wellbeing. So the health coaching people and the health trainers are very likely to be also managing a garden and running volunteer gardening groups there as well. And just to give you a scale of the numbers, last week I think we had about 95 people at 11 different small gardening projects. It's quite quiet in the colder weather and it'll get busier again in the summer. So I think I've given you a bit of a flavour there, but I'd be very happy to provide any level of detail after the meeting if that's of interest.
Thanks very much, Sue. The one thing Sue didn't talk about, touch on, and then we give them real massive flavour. Sue, the farmer, delivered on holiday activities and food, which is the DFE programme in the school holidays to support families in receipt of free school meals. So it's just bringing in that outdoor space into, into a full range. We've had, you know, it's a cradle to grave approach in there. The colleagues from the Wildlife Trust, thank you.
Hi, thanks again for having us. So I'm just going to be talking really quickly about the insight and the mapping that we were commissioned to do from the ICS. And then we'll also be talking a little bit about the social prescribing and our green social prescribing with a few examples that the others have. So just to really quickly say, we were sort of engaged to help lead the mapping and the scoping and the co-design with communities and partners as part of the ICS project and that insight helped formulate the grant programme. But it also really helped us work out what pathways to go and how to grow and strengthen green prescribing across the area. So I'm just going to let my colleague, Kieran, who was at the forefront of that scoping exercise, explain a little bit how we did it. Then I'll talk about some of the outcomes.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that we, rather than presuming what people wanted to do, we actually kind of spoke to everyone and asked them what's missing and what we can do to make things better. And we started by kind of talking with all the providers and the healthcare sector and kind of trying to bring everyone in Sheffield. So primary care, secondary care, anyone with kind of hand in this kind of pot to a kind of stakeholder meeting. We had about 60 people in a three-hour Zoom conference. We didn't lose anyone in any breakout rooms, got everyone back in and had some really great discussions there. But then we wanted to make sure that we actually spoke to the service users or the potential service users who would be using these services, going to the GP and then being prescribed green and blue social prescriptions. So we also kind of went out and did walks with groups and kind of met some fantastic organisations such as went to like take part in the garden with Man and Healy Development Trust and really got to kind of talk to people who told us firsthand what it is. And the questions we asked the providers were what the kind of the opportunities, the barriers and what support is needed to kind of develop this area. And we just used those same questions to ask our service users, you know, what do you enjoy doing at the moment? What help do you need to do more of this kind of thing? And then brought it together for the outcomes, which I'll probably hand back over to anyone.
And what we'd say is during that process, we had amazing buy-in from place leads across the area. And I think that really helped bring everyone together to get a really full report. So the overall outcome from the whole area, like the common themes, were definitely around about improving pathways. So pathways between the voluntary organisations and the NHS and the link workers and the infrastructure around developing provision close to where people live. So everything you were saying about the importance of having nature and green and blue spaces on your doorstep. Because one of the biggest barriers people had was travel. The other area we came around was around confidence and safety in those areas. So again, exactly what you were saying, you can have a beautiful park, but if people don't feel confident or safe, it's unusable, it's inaccessible. And so it's really about understanding that. The other areas that we came as a theme was around developing hubs and networks, bringing together green prescribing organisations to share knowledge, to able to experience, to upskill each other. And that led to the creation of the Green Prescribing Network, which is a voluntary-led organisation that now meets once every two months. And that's currently supported by the ICS. And again, as everyone always says, the big, that came up for the green prescribing providers was around sustainable funding. When funding's short, it's really hard to get, do the long-term relationships that's quite often needed. And then some of the other barriers were around travel and kit, like having, believing you have the right clothes, rightly or wrongly to go outside. And also that understanding, awareness and information. We use the word green prescribing all the time and it means not a lot to people who aren't in our area. So really understanding how easy language, how we communicate resources, how we communicate opportunities. And alongside that, building community connectors, so understanding that different communities will talk in a different way, will be represented. And really building those connections between communities and the voluntary sector and then the NHS. So it's a whole infrastructure, which is what the scoping exercise really brought to life. Interestingly, specifically for Sheffield, that was on top of this, if you like, it came across about, exactly what Emma said, what a strong infrastructure you already have. But how a lot of the green prescribing currently is a little bit more in-house because of the way the link works set up and how we could add value to that really strong infrastructure by increasing those pathways to more voluntary organisations. What also came through with Sheffield was a real strong will and commitment to this idea of green prescribing. And then just because I thought it was just a bit of an interesting fact, you are definitely the highest rate of halt to cultural as a green prescribing activity. So you're all good growers in Sheffield apparently, which I really enjoyed. So we've got the report, we've got loads more information, I don't want to overload you today. So if anybody wants to talk to us afterwards, they absolutely can. And then just to talk a little bit about the green prescribing we directly offer. So we've been doing, as part of this thing, we've been doing training in green connectedness, nature connectedness for link workers and for other organisations to be able to embed that. But we also do direct social prescribing, social prescribing through our Wild At Heart programmes. And they are all about supporting isolated adults to meet, connect with nature and connect with each other. And we've run some of those commissioned in Rotherham, in Sheffield. We've had a support from the National Lottery and then most recently Cadence. But just to give you a little flavour of what these groups mean. And they were before they were face-to-face, then during Covid, they came online, what we call distance engagement, through letters and phone calls. And that probably was as important to people as a face-to-face, which was really interesting through Covid. So I've just got two little case studies, I've changed names. Just to give you a flavour of that, it doesn't feel like you're doing like a craft group or a green connected, but it makes a massive difference. So take Sarah, Sarah came along to one of our groups. She was referred through link worker and she was very nervous, so she came with a volunteer. Sarah's an old lady who's quite isolated and very nervous about coming. For the first few times, she came with a volunteer. She then started to make a few connections and networks in the group and a few friendships. From that and some of the activities, she then came, was able to come by herself. And then she took on the idea of growing, so she grew in her little garden, she started little growing. And one of the things she grew was courgettes. And then a little bit later on in the group, someone was talking about what do you do when you have too many courgettes? And she thought about her courgettes. And then she went away, bearing this in mind, as someone who couldn't even attend without support, created a recipe for courgette and parsnip smoothie, wrote it up, wrote, hand-read it, wrote on and brought it out so she could gift to every other person in the group this recipe. So if they had a problem with their courgettes, it was solved. And whilst that doesn't sound like this person has gone from being too nervous to join a group to actively contributing and helping other people in their group. So it's quite phenomenal in those little changes in that person. And another one during lockdown with a man called Avinda. And he'd previously come to one of the groups and then lockdown hit really quickly and he really struggled with lockdown. So we did our disengagement, we did phone calls once a week, we sent out packs of activities and we did soon, like cook together. Now, Avinda did all the activities and they used to do the colouring activities and then upload them on the internet, send them to his grandchildren. And his grandchildren would then colour the same pictures, so he'd have that connection. And then Avinda, who's never cooked in his life, started to join in the cooking sessions online. And then by the time lockdown was lifted, he was able to meet his grandchildren again, he's planning to cook them scones. We never quite knew how well they went, but he did have a go. And it's those kind of small case studies that have a huge impact. It's not like, it's not an impact that's easy to quantify, but that's what green prescribing is about. It's about connecting to each other, to nature and make those little differences that actually make quite a big one, if that makes sense. So yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Emma. Thank you very much. And I think that just brings to the end our, you know, flavour of, you know, taking the quite dry report that I wrote and John put a lot more life into it and getting colleagues to talk through some really lovely examples. I think one of the things that I take from it, I heard friendship many times in there. So we could have almost had that as a discussion about friendship and reducing loneliness and as an approach as well. So I just want to hand back to your chair, so thank you for this opportunity.
Kind of thank you, Emma, and thank you to all the speakers for quite an enlightening account, albeit brief in the town that we've got, of what is out there, I think, which is largely what we wanted to get out of this. As its name implies, the scrutiny committee, its primary role is to scrutinise, you know, what you're providing, you know. I have a general question, I'll leave it for you to think about while I bring in other people. Well, a couple of questions actually. Well, one maybe to Emma in terms of the ICS funding and what indication there is on whether or not that will continue. Two, the others, it's really about what do you think that the statutory agencies, including Sheffield City Council, could do more to build on the obvious good work that is out there, carried out in the, in the community? And whether you see that there are, whether there are barriers. I know, I know one or two have mentioned there are barriers, you know. What I'm thinking of, you know, how public do you make some of the sites that are out there, you know, in terms of disturbance and biodiversity and so on? How accessible are they? What issues are there about mobility access, for example? Toilets were mentioned, you know, those kinds of things. I'll leave those for you to think about because I think it's the turn of the elected members to ask questions once. And I've got Gary. Question, Gary.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Happy New Year to you all. And it's really, really nice to listen to so many speakers, very passionate about what you're doing. And you know, what you're doing to the people and citizens of Sheffield. It's really nice. And you've touched on absolutely everything, you know, not everything you're doing, but I mean, you know, helping out in schools, school holiday fund stuff. You know, that's been a massive welcome ride over the city in the last eighteen months, what you're all doing. And the case studies, I could listen to them all day, every day. It's very, you come across so passionate what you're doing, taking people out and you can see that lighting and the face and they're doing it after. And the scones, we'll have to find out if you did do them because it'd be interesting if you carried that through. So yeah, so thanks for that. But my question is, Chair. These cafes were opening, there's more and more people going out into Woolness. I said Woolness, I said that very lightly, it's like you're ten minutes from a wood, any others are. But going further out into Peter Street and into parts we've got around Sheffield. I'm just worried about, you've not mentioned toilets, I mean, that's, you know, as my age group, we need them, we welcome them. I plan my route every time I go out for them. But its throw lines, what's not just mentioned, you know, got all these waterways and everything, so these throw lines and defibrillators. You know, are we going to put those into these new cafes we're opening? And has the Power Rangers got these? And has, you know, your own site's got these as well? Thanks, Chair. Hold on.
Chair, do you want us to respond? No. John, do you want to take that?
So very good question. Obviously, we have a number of land managers and blue space managers in the city. I suppose the report alludes to this emerging sort of discovery centre or hub model. If you think that's not just about council facilities, I think the parallel I often draw is like, you know, if you think of sports, you have sports centres, green spaces also need these green space hubs. Sue's got one and she's just brilliantly whispered they have a defibrillator there. We, you know, one of the places I manage is the Wood and Discovery Centre at Exell Woods. We'd love to have a defibrillator there. We're looking at doing a crowdfund to get one. Canals and River Trust will have some form of throw lines on some of those watercourses. You also get into that education, but I think in relation to a consistent level of offer across the city. That's why we're talking about environmental levelling up. That's why we're saying, you know, we've got a wonderful public health-funded visitor centre in the Shawbrook Valley. We're working with all these partners, trying to get it animated. Obviously, we have some ranges in the city as the link between people and place, that bit of local knowledge. But we've got communities that provide that. We've got other organisations that provide that. I suppose we're at the point now, if you talk about cafes and within parks and countryside, you may have heard about the Better Parks Programme, as we get more concessions and teas and coffees and think about the litter and the responsibility of that. We are starting to have these hubs, be it the Age Concern Centre at Hillsborough, be it Exfield Park, Parwood Springs, even then, you know, long-term aspirations, maybe with Wildlife Trust around Grenner Woods, Wheaton Woods, Warmcliff Woods. These little natural greens prescribing hubs do need to rise up. And I think all the challenges you then present are very real. And then the ability, just to cover that, is obviously we are in a natural landscape. So there will always be that, you know, a natural landscape, the same way as the biodiversity of a site may sort of influence its carrying capacity, we say, how many people can use it. You do hit the thing that sometimes sites are just physically inaccessible. But at the same time, you look at technology and you look at things like Hillsborough Cycling For All projects and sort of adaptive bikes, adaptive scooters. We did have a scoot hire or scoot project within the city. So again, it's maybe time again to start looking at this sort of thing and think about where is the provision across the whole city? Because the thing we clearly can't always do is everything everywhere because of the nature of the landscape. But I think it's good challenges and I suppose that's from the parks and countryside's front. And obviously, like any land manager, the budget challenges, the income challenges do make it harder. But I think as a, as a, as a sort of standard for a visitor centre or a discovery centre, I think that would be a very good challenge of, you know, these are some of the basics that maybe all any, you know, facility provider, be it Manor Castle Development Trust with their facility there or a discovery centre or elsewhere, that could be a really good, you know, thing to commonly have around green prescribing.
Can I just add just one little anecdote to that? We have a dementia garden at the farm and the paths have been made wheelchair accessible so that even people who can't walk at all can go all the way around the site. And when lockdown started in 2020, all our toilet rolls were stolen from the public toilets. There was a shortage of them in the shops and we put an appeal out on Facebook and we're still using up all the bog rolls that were donated to Healy City Farm in March 2020. The members of the public just came down and donated. So we did quite well out of toilet roll gate.
And I think just to pick up the defib conversation, I think definitely in where I live in sort of the north, the north-west of the city where it's more rural, communities are funding those together actually. So some of it's also about local solutions. I've been part of some of those conversations and contributions. And therefore then as a statutory agency, we can fund in those areas where maybe the communities can't respond as well.
Thanks for that. Francie? Oh, you're there. I'm looking the wrong way.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Thanks. It's really great to hear about.
This one. Thanks. It's really great to hear about everything that you're doing. And I suppose this is probably a question of John, actually. I'd like to ask about access to open water. I know you've spoken a lot about access to nature and we are very lucky in Sheffield in terms of most people are within easy access of a green space. But, you know, one area that I can think there's a real inequality of access in Sheffield is to open water. I know that Rivlin and Slippery Stones are mentioned on the Outdoor Cities website. But both of those are kind of quite tricky to access if you haven't got a car. They're not easy to get to by public transport. And also I think it's important in terms of, you know, access for physical abilities as well. Like not everybody's necessarily able to walk in nature, but sometimes people can swim. So I know myself, I had Covid in March 2020 and had long Covid after that. And I wasn't able to walk much at all, but I was able to swim. And, you know, I live quite near Rivlin, so that was accessible to me and I could swim most days. And it was hugely beneficial to me and I know it is to lots of other people as well. And yeah, I just wanted to ask about that. If you've been able to give any sort of consideration to access to open water in Sheffield? Thanks.
So yeah, simple question. Thank you very much. So yeah, the whole access to water is an ongoing conversation. Obviously, part of it is rooted in health and safety. I often look back fondly and think of, was it Longley Park? It used to have a Lido in the bottom, I think. There's some wonderful pictures of, you know, Millhouses Park, Longley Park. And you just would wish, you know, you know, with Havishage Pool, for those that know that out there, that's busier than ever, that some entrepreneur would come along and just build a new water facility to come beyond the wet play area at Rivlin Playground or Millhouses Park and that sort of interaction. We do get, you know, an annual request for can we swim in Crooks Valley Park? And the answer, even though you think, well, there's a university club who could be diving into there, checking there and triathlon clubs and can we make this happen? But I think there is a question around risk and capacity to actually, you know, how can we make this happen? And I think with all the priorities and all the different things we're trying to do as an authority, it does fall down that list. I think Yorkshire Water, if you think of the people that have been involved in our reservoirs around us, they had one tragedy this year up in North Yorkshire, which meant they were actually having, sending security guards out at weekends to discourage people swimming in the reservoirs. Yet there's a national discussion on this. And, you know, they had started to put a paper together around the reservoirs in the north of the city. One of them, Wildlife Trust, working very closely on the nature, the biodiversity value. Because obviously this, the thing with water and this going back to the other point almost of how do we keep managed risk, it's through education. That's why green prescribing is important, that, you know, that going out and swimming on some of these sites may be dangerous, but it also may be disruptive to biodiversity. We're thinking about water vole and, you know, water vole as well. But Yorkshire Water sometimes say there's a conversation, Holiday Activity Fund, we were trying really desperately to get schools to underbank to access what is up there. You know, why we can't go stand-up paddle boarding, which is the best excuse and the easiest way to fall in water with a big life raft for a young person, you know, that's something that would be great, but it is a real, you know, a real sort of, yeah, it's an emotive thing and we've only seen it with lockdown get more and more popular. And again, working with the different land managers, so my boss Rowan's not here today partly because she's at the Sheffield Moors partnership meeting. And we know the pressure from wild swimming is bigger and bigger there. So we know people want to, we know there's reservoirs, we know we've got, you know, there's a real desire nationally, this is a national debate. It's just then the confidence with health and safety, the insurance underwriters, the fact accidents do happen. And, you know, however tragic it has been, there has been loads of people also enjoying using water, using these spaces. So there is a balance there of the risk. You know, I'm the advocate of it. I love playing around in water. It's elemental play. It's, you know, it goes into that story, but it is hard in that sense. And obviously, if anyone has got the spare ten million to build a facility at Longley Park, I'm sure someone here would happily open it for it. And, you know, I just always love the pictures that we see. But it is hard. Yeah, there's no easy solution, I'm afraid.
Sorry, I can't press the button. Diane?
Thank you, Chair. What a positive affirmation that presentation was. We know don't we? To have a walk in green open countryside or even alongside a canal or through a wood, how it lifts your spirits and how much better it makes you feel. So thank you. Thank you for coming along and doing that. I was really interested about the point that was made about the importance of local access. Fundamental. And I wondered if we'd started being ambitious together as a partnership and started talking about creating those local networks and putting plans in place for beyond the life of this funding, for how we can enhance that network of paths that will, that will take you somewhere because we've all got networks of paths that don't even have to be public rights away, just a desire line or a route, isn't it, through that that people can use and they will take you somewhere. Because it's like the, what is it, build it and they will follow. Or is it field dreams or whatever? And we've got to have, we've got to have the plans there, haven't we? We've got to have the ambition to be able to access funding or to be able to make bids for, I don't know, local seal monies or look at, you know, the developing opportunity of the Sheffield Plan. And just wondered if you'd started raising your eyes to the horizon to start doing that planting, that planning, sorry.
Chair, do you want me to start and respond? So I think, take that point and your first question, Chair, if that's okay, when you asked about funding, I think they interweave. I think we're lucky that we're working with colleagues at the ICS who have been really proactive in using the NHS funding as a launchpad to seek and attract other funding. So the reason why I said twelve organisations and possibly another two were going to be funded is because she's worked really hard with people like Yorkshire Sport to pull in other monies. She sees that this, the green prescribing project, the NHS one, is a launchpad to move that forward. So although we haven't got clarity of extension of funding, I know that Karen at the ICS is working really hard and has brought in other monies to build on the project as it is now. And we are already benefiting from that in Sheffield. I think when I worked alongside Karen in the developing, and Karen was going to come today. Actually, her husband's getting an OBE, so she's gone off to London. But she would have been here today, so apologies from her. We were really clear about let's not just have some start-stop funding coming in. We're very much around the insight that colleagues from the Wildlife Trust talked about and how do we build and invest in our workforce? So some of that capacity building within the broad sense of our voluntary sector, building those networks and relationships now so that they outlast maybe the grants. I think, I think it's too simple to say that that's the only thing that is required. As Lewis said, you know, funding is so important. But enabling staff to build on that, build on their knowledge and understanding, means they can apply for more money. Sue talked about her growing project and you've been successful in some different funding this year on the back of that. So actually, some of the council money that goes into people, into people keeping well, into some of the mini projects that we've heard about, you know, people can build on. I think the other thing that is really important, that actually every time someone has this conversation with me, I actually go, well, let me get back to you. And then I phone John. And I think, I think it's really important to recognise both sides. Whether we're a land manager or we're part of the land manager, but also through the really strong partnerships that we've got with the voluntary sector. You know, John proactively talks more about the capacity building, the organisations sometimes than I do. And I forget which one of us is the person that works with the voluntary sector or which one of us is the land manager. But I think there's so important is that partnership. John?
Just to add to the second bit about infrastructure, really, I suppose that's the really interesting thing is that I think on the green spaces and connectivity of green spaces, you know, you can put a footpath down and it's twenty-five pounds a metre if it's grit, it's more if it's tarmac. But I think again, Covid really showed the focus of what the issue is and the issue is actually connectivity to green space. So the, and this is where you, if you were with transport colleagues, we do have, and this is something we've talked to the Outdoor City and we've done some work during lockdown, when you saw cars on verges and people struggling to cross, on Grenner Woods, across the main road there, I forget the name of the road up there through Grennyside, or they're trying to get across Charcliffe Road, or they're hanging water trying to get through the Porter Valley. And this is one of the actual problems we're facing is that actually once in the green space, that experience, that way marking, that knowing where to go, that building of confidence can be grown. But one of the actual challenges we have still is that access and to the green space, not just by car, but by bike or just the simple zebra crossing or the pedestrian calming is the real barrier. And we've had discussions with people like the city region, so looking at the combined Mayor Oral Authority and one of the, one of the interesting things you get into is obviously that, you know, we're doing the best as, that, you know, transport planners are working very hard to provide this, you know, this sort of web and network of active travel routes for walking and cycling. But that's mainly around the economics of getting to the city and getting to business districts. And one of the hard things is then recognising the importance of the local park. And so if you think when these big pots of money come along or these, you know, these regional multi-million pounds come along, the government is still telling us to sort of invest it in getting to the city centre or getting to business. Yet as a green, amazing city, what we also need to be able to do is put the pedestrian crossing in that makes all the difference. So that after school and beat the streets even showed this a bit as people are trying to access the site. They were running around excitingly hitting the little lamp posts, but, you know, it could be until the recent traffic improvements even on But, you know, it could be until the recent traffic improvements even in Healy, you know, to get across Chesterfield Road, the crossing's there and suddenly you're able to access Healy City Farm. So I would say, you know, the infrastructure's doable and, you know, a little way marker can make a huge difference. But that's pence, you know, 98p or pounds to get a way marker and work with this wonderful network to put them up. The actual harder challenge is actually getting people to the door of the green space. And that is harder when we look as a city to how we balance and do that. But that was one of the interesting conversations with the City Region about how do we reframe these green spaces values so we can get that money coming in. Sorry.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I think a lot of the work we've been doing at the Wildlife Trust is looking at nature recovery networks and looking at mapping out green spaces, putting the overlay of the community access to that. And what we need to, exactly what you said, is make sure that any work we are doing is joined up across the council work, across the voluntary organisations. And you don't want one partner working. But in that respect, there's an awful lot of community work around the Sheffield Nature Recovery at the moment, which has got a lot of voices in it. So there's lots of positive moves in that direction as well. So there's lots of work to get there. And we've at the Wildlife Trust done a little project which is helping people connect with their green spaces that are locally. But it's how we amplify that, so how it doesn't just happen in one section, how we repeat that and how we share that learning and that training across everyone. So it doesn't just stay in pockets, but we have a collective response. And I think we're part of way there, but we could probably work a bit further, I think.
I think the final point to say is when we, when as an authority or other big funding sources come in, so holiday activities and food, we've touched on. But actually, you know, in some respects, last summer was a perfect opportunity because a huge amount of it was delivered outside. It was important to voluntary organisations to deliver outside. And actually, I've spent a lot of time with John, bless him, you know, going, how do we do this in this park? How do we do that in park? So one of the most oversubscribed activities was tree climbing, wasn't it, John? I just, it made me sort of slightly die inside the thought of the tree climbing. And John went, no, 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 we've tested all the trees. And but tree climbing, axe throwing, you know, was amazing. Well, it happened and everybody was fine, so you're okay. And John said it was fine, I'm going to say. But, you know, we need, we don't need to use a terminology of green prescribing. We just need to bring in connecting to natureness to any opportunities that we have that come into the city. And I think that's built on relationships and trust, whether that's an internal approach and/or that partnership. Just to say, Sue's chairing at Board of Trustees up at the farm, which is why she shot up.
Okay. Ruth?
Yeah, it's really fantastic to hear about all the projects that are going on. I was interested to find out what's being done to introduce children under the age of 16 to nature so that they get all the benefits from an early age.
So I think with almost that holiday activities and food programme, where we have really strived, actually, John sent me a note this week and we've not even, we've not managed to come to Co-op Exec yet to get it approved this year. John's already asking me for some money and saying, how can we do this? So I think it is very much using all of those opportunities. There is a strong drive, I know, in public health, in the food and obesity agenda around moving into much more food growing. So I'm talking on behalf of colleagues in public health, but I know that there is an active view of how do we work with schools and growing projects within schools. And we've had a tentative conversation. Jess and I, Jess leads on food and obesity, and she works, we work together on holiday activities and food. We talked about how, what happens is all the gardens in schools, you know, the food that they grow dies over the holidays. So we were actually working out how we could maybe do some half over the summer holidays to keep all the food alive and kids going in schools. So I think it's a good challenge and I think it's something that is being developed. And it's that crossover with the physical activity and the move more. So I think sometimes we talk with that green lens, sometimes we talk with the physical activity lens, sometimes we just talk about, as Amy referenced, you know, making friends and connections actually. And it's bringing all of those really important things together. Sometimes we just don't call it that, give it that label necessarily.
Can I just make mention of a book that I've just read that people here might be really interested in? It's all about the benefits of nature and it's called The Well-Garden Mine by Sue Stuart Smith. If you haven't read it, I've really-
Well-Garden Mine, did you say?
Yes, by Sue Stuart Smith. It's all about the benefits of nature.
Right, Alan Hooper.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. 2.11, community wellbeing. Covid's changed many things over the last couple of years. And certainly where communities are involved. There's not been the opportunity to meet socially for lots and lots of people. And that's right from toddlers, from toddler groups to the old people's groups. So what's happened, and John's described Grenner Woods, Wancliff Woods, there's been lots of people in there, but not sort of groups, not school groups or anything like that because they've not been able to do it. But what's happened is more people have used it, people who've never used the woods before and open spaces before. But it's been extended families. So I think we need to start to change back now to where we were some two, three, four years ago and get back to some organised events for different people, especially the young people as well and older people. We've still got the Health Walks in various places. But it's, we've changed over the last couple of years and it's getting back. Certainly, I'd like to work with the Rotherham Wildlife Trust in Grennyside to look at how we can expand. You do work with the volunteers there, but there's much, much more opportunities. I'm Chair of the North Lac and I think we need to have you at either one of our presentations evenings and/or one of our briefings to look at what we can do. So we can help you, you can help us. Two questions. One, in the north of Sheffield, we spoke about the Grow Sheffield project. Has anything happened in the north of Sheffield? And the second question would be relating to the People Keeping Well projects and partnerships and the 10 community organisations. Is there any that's spread into the north of Sheffield? The north of Sheffield being Stanington, Stockbridge, sort of High Green Chapel Town in Echolsfield. We've got lots of open spaces. We're overwhelmed with them, but it's just how we use them. We need to use them. Thank you, Chair.
I can pick some of that up for you. So People Keeping Well is a citywide approach. And you touched on quite a large part of the city there and a number of organisations work in those areas. So Stanington's actually supported through ZEST, so ZEST cover the Upper Thorpe, Nether Thorpe, Hillsborough, Stanington bit of the world. And then Stockbridge Leisure Centre in Francine's bit of the world, come down as far as Ute Bridge and Worrell. But organisations lead partners work with partner organisations. So ZEST actively work with Age UK, as John referenced, in terms of the work that's going on in Hillsborough Park. I know that Stockbridge Leisure Centre have been working with other organisations in the area and then picking up High Green Chapel Town. Sora are actually the lead partner, but very much actively work with the parish council. And I know that there has been a change in High Green Development Trust and starting to make connections there and Echolsfield Library. So if you would, I'm happy to come and give you a broader briefing to give you an understanding of what that is. I think there is more structured activities happening. Some of it's quite low key, some of it's outside. What we haven't touched on today, some of the active travel, walking for purpose monies went to People Keeping Well. And actually, that enabled them to do more walking, actually made them think about changing some of their activities on the way that they supported people into walking. So I think what we're seeing is some more pram pushers in places like Manor Park. I know that Shire Broke are very much looking at a pram push from the Wild, from the hub there. So I'm happy to bring partners to lac meeting to explain that in more detail to you. So a bit of a similar thing to this, but bringing colleagues to a lac meeting to describe more detail to you.
So on that, I suppose it's two observations. I think we do go back to sort of Lewis's comment about funding and continuity. So we have, you know, it's back to the provision isn't equal everywhere. All the same activities haven't rolled out everywhere. So we've been doing some work with the local business called Nature Box around sort of early years provision, toddler provision, which is a private business based at the Woodland Countryside Centre. There's obviously the Wildlife Trust for their sites there, they do stuff around activities. But so there is that upskilling. There's the sort of things we know that work and could happen up there and could happen in wider areas, also working with our green space friends of groups too. So I know there's a lot of work around Stockbridge Sports Centre as well and that's starting to bring some of these conversations alive. But I think you're right, capturing everything in one place would be really powerful to do. And then look at those networks, the Stockbridge Steel Valley, Paces Centre, Wildlife Trust. And that sharing between us of who's doing good practice. We've got, you know, an activity provider in Glenhow Park at the moment who's doing sort of like wilderness and forest schools activity. And sometimes it's just that signposting. And this is often the, when we talk as parks about capacity building, it's like, oh, did you know that's happening over there? And those networks build and then the community gets stronger and stronger and stronger. But I think there is that continuity of funding is, you know, we've got, you've got to hear that in this because that's the thing that can build these relationships and build these networks.
And I think it's, sorry to follow up John's point, sorry, Lewis. It is really important, actually, and I should have referenced that, there's significantly less public, People Keeping Well monies in Stanington, in High Green than there is in Manor and Southey because we fund to deprivation levels. So actually, what you might see in parts of the city, there just isn't the same funding in other bits of the city because it's funded on a deprivation model. Apologies, Lewis, if you were going to come in.
Don't apologise, it's all good. And yeah, I just wanted to touch on the Grow point. So I think as John rightly mentioned, my job's similar in terms of, I often connect people in and make people aware of the opportunities that are out there. So if there's a need in the north of Sheffield for a programme like Grow, I think it's about connecting in, but also then realising that Grow is a, this is just an example. It's a citywide project, but again, it's only finite resources that are put into Grow. So I think if there's a need, we need to put money, more money into that need. But I'm very happy to connect you in and have those conversations because there's so many organisations that provide similar support for people. So yeah, I would very much welcome that opportunity.
Okay, absolutely. And then I've got Ruth and then Lucy.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everybody. It was really impressive. It's really good to hear about everything that is going on. It's the green prescribing, all the people who are involved in volunteering and working on the projects. As I said, very impressive. What I'm wondering about is getting the word out about what is available and what is happening. And I think building on what councillor Hooper was saying about the local area committees and the structures there. What I wanted to ask about, a lot of information is available online, but not everybody is online. People, the word is especially digitally excluded. What I wanted to ask about is something like a directory based on the local area committee areas? If that is something that could be thought about or has been considered? It's just about letting people know what is going on and being, extending participation. So it's, what do you think about directories based on local area committees?
Emmy, if you want to go first. This has been a huge part of the conversations and insight and mapping because I think every area is asking the same in that respect. And what are part of our next job in the next year of the ICS money is to try and explore that a little bit, to see what might work and what might be sustainable in the different areas, including Sheffield. Because one problem with a directory as in a way you'd think it would be, without substantial continual funding, it goes out of date instantly. And the minute it goes out of date, everyone loses confidence in it. So a big bit of our work next is working to see how can we strengthen existing networks? So when communications change, we find a way, how can we build on what already exists? So the answer is, we don't have an answer yet, but we're working on it as we speak. That's helpful.
That's good to hear and thank you. Lewis, did you want to come in there?
Yeah, just to say, just to build on that point, that I think you're right. People that are digitally excluded, using an online directory is just not going to work. But I think we're very lucky in Sheffield that, we've probably got too many directories in a sense. It's just people don't know about them sometimes. So there's the Sheffield Directory, which is immense and it's great, but it's a bit clunky sometimes. There's the Sheffield Mental Health Guide, which is really user friendly and it's mental health specific. And then there's also the Living Well Guides, which are the council produced, what is this? This is paper, paper guides that are for the north and the south of Sheffield. So the resources are out there, but you pose a good question is how do we tell people about them? Because if you're not online, it's very difficult. And if you don't go outside, it's difficult to hear from word of mouth. So there's not one answer to solve it. I think it's just trying as many different things as possible. That's the way of the mind.
And I think a mini example is, it's about to be the Festival of the Outdoors, have I said that right, John? In March, colleague who works in the inclusive economy dropped a note to me and said, Emma, we're really, we're going to have a printed guide and we're really keen to get many of the voluntary organisations to publicise what they do. So I think some of it is back to that building the relationships internally in this massive organisation. And I've been gobsmacked, I put a note out on behalf of Mark and loads of pram pushers and all sorts came back and they're going in the printed guide. It's just for March, but I think it's a start of that conversation. And it might be something that someone has in their hand and then going back to, it'd be slightly out of date post-March. But there's an organisation there, there's a list, there's a name. So I think, I think there are answers coming.
Okay. One members that we have people waiting for the next item and I've got, so if we keep questions and responses, if I may, as brief as possible, I've got Ruth, then Lucy and then Bernard. And I think I'll have to take Bernard as the last one, if that's okay.
Thank you. Just on the point that Sue just made there about a directory, we've just been talking about that. And it's brilliant to hear there's so much going, there's so much more going on than I'd imagined. And I'm quite a nosy person, so I think the thing of getting information out there is an obvious one, isn't it? And this morning, we had a South West Lac meeting in which we heard from Kate Clark, an update on the sport and leisure strategy, which was brilliant as well. And I was asking her in that meeting, could there be an app developed? Now, I know that is, we've just talked about people who are digitally excluded and that's a very important side of it. But for people who do like an app, it would be just the most fantastic way to have all this information and really easily updatable and would, might also provide people an opportunity to kind of track their own activity as well, their own movement, keep, you know, keep a little diary, be competitive with yourself, that sort of thing. I think there'd be quite a lot of scope in that, that would work for a lot of people, not everybody. With the sort of communication through the lacs in mind, would it be possible to have a comprehensive list of who all these providers are, sent to each lac? Because I'll tell you why, because my ward has only allocated just under 50% of its ward pot this year. And some of that has gone to activity groups like Chair Row Bits and the Step Out Project and so on. But we're really struggling to use all our money. So what would be really useful would be to see who, you know, who's already out there providing things and have we reached them all, have we approached them all, asking if they need ward pot money? Just a bit of linking up there might be good. I think you grimaced when I said, could we have a full list?
Sorry, that was too public on my face, wasn't it?
I'll leave it with you. If it's possible, then it would be great. If it's not, then don't have a headache over it. If it's not, then don't have a headache over it. But I've got just one, one other question about the cost of green prescribing. And I'm talking about literal prescribing, you know, so when, when, when there's, when someone actually has activity prescribed to them as something that's going to bring them a health benefit. So I'm not talking, we're not talking about now people who do or don't visit their local park as a regular activity. I'm talking about people who need, you know, who need some outdoor activity and have it prescribed to them, recommended to them by their primary care provider. What, what is the situation with cost in that? Does, if that happens, does someone have to pay for services or is it paid for by the NHS? Do they have to buy a pair of walking boots or is that provided by the NHS?
I, I think, Chair, if you don't mind, Ruth, it might be really useful if you and I just sit down and talk through and explore some stuff about, you know, the list and your lack pot. Maybe you, me and Denise get together and, and have a conversation. I'll drop Denise a note maybe and we can organise that for, for your lack. I think in terms of, as you describe, prescribed, I, I don't think that actually in reality happens in Sheffield. And it's something we often discourage, to be honest, because in reality, when a person walks through the door in primary care, it's a very short conversation with maybe a health professional that they don't know very well. But there is clearly some things going on in their life that is not necessarily clinical, but more of a, a social requirement, which green, connecting with Notioners, will help at some level. So in reality, the, the mechanism that's often set up in Sheffield is, is where, is that primary care professional works generally with their community anchor or maybe someone like Sheffield Futures or AGUK, where there's a worker there that can spend time and listen to the person, understand their situation, of which green might be some of the answer. But some of the answer might be that the bailiffs are coming or that they can't afford any food for their kids and stuff. There's a whole plethora of things going on for somebody. I think where you pick up the thing about green, I think is some of the stuff that John touched on around developing the workforce understanding that says to connect in nature, you don't need some hiking boots, you don't need to do this, you don't need to do that. And then actually, some of our, some of our projects are excellent at working with communities to get donated stuff. So, I mean, particularly there's a lot of crossover with the physical activity space. So John's forever got a boot full of trainers to hand out to people that we've got, you know, donated from, from companies and things like that to help. Manor Castle in their, alongside the food bank, there's a shop where actually there's a big massive rail around running, you know, so that they, that a lot of their staff volunteer on the park run. And actually what they set up in the food bank in the, in the clothing bit is actually a way to donate old running kit and stuff like that. So, so there are many options. I, I think it's not described as in when the doctor writes something, somebody pays over some money. They refer into a project that we possibly fund or is grant funded or something like that.
Okay, I mean, there was, there was a slightly more specific sort of side to it. Like, so you've got a person who's house, pretty much housebound, they can only go out with the assistance of somebody else. Can the NHS actually prescribe, in inverted commas, extra carer hours, for example, to take them out in, into a park?
The system doesn't work that way at the moment. Money doesn't, money doesn't follow a person from primary care. There isn't, here's £50, here's £250. If the person had eligible care, social needs and the person had a direct payment, definitely those things happen, but they've gone through a social care process as part, as separate to the, it's, it's a very, it's very complicated. And I think the straight answer is, it's quite complex.
We'll have to move on to Lucy.
Thank you. Just to echo what everybody else has already said about how lovely that was to listen to. So thank you for that. I just had a question that's related to equality and there's kind of two parts to it really. The first bit relates to the sort of levelling up that you were speaking about, John, and the environment across the city. I love the phrase that you used about how, you know, we want to work together to animate those spaces. So you're talking about drawing in people to partnerships, sorry, to do that. I just wondered how you addressed issues where in sort of certain parts of the city, local communities have less capacity to be a part of that. So there were barriers, for example, for some people to being part of friends groups and often money comes through roots, which is that. So what is the sort of council's role in, I guess, putting in additional support to catalyse more activity where the local community has, I won't say a deficit, but barriers to kind of taking on some of that themselves? And then when you're bringing in external partners to do work in a local area, say, such as at Parkwood Springs, how you bring the local community on board, how people that live next to that facility that maybe haven't been a part of developing it, how they become engaged and how you connect to them to make sure they, A, know it's there and B, get motivated to be a part of it. So that's the levelling up bit. And then I guess just specifically to the, in relation to the grants, noted in the paper that the grants were given to projects that had a clear commitment to increasing diversity and inclusion. And I wondered what was being done to measure that and at what point we'd know whether or not that sort of aim of the project had been successful and to what degree. Thank you.
So yeah, really good question. And then you end up almost having to look into your own organisation. So we have 65 friends of groups across the city and they look, are key to looking after our green and open spaces. But they may not, and they may not want to be the super inclusive, super diverse, engaging people. They may have got involved in this green space because they love the nature conservation, they love the biodiversity. And yet we're trying to make green spaces for everyone. And so you instantly are not then weirdly working with the green space groups. And that's one of the big, deep breaths you have to take with this. Even the term green social prescribing and biodiversity in nature and can be a barrier to all that. It almost tips then into the clothing conversation that, you know, obviously we all flick through magazines of, you know, the outdoors and there's someone presented there in a fancy jacket, looking often very white, sporty and middle class. And that's completely the representation we don't want. I suppose the beauty here is how we set up is working with the community anchor organisations, working with Voltrax in Sheffield and almost that step back and of not expecting these people to come to us to start with, that growing in confidence. So who is the best local person we can work with to capacity build, to visit their green space on their terms? Because obviously you're right, not everyone likes dog walking, not everyone likes biking, not everyone likes walking, seeing nature. Some people may just want to hit a golf ball around a football pitch and that's their version of green prescribing. Obviously with a nature emergency in the city, we're going to try and educate these people and trying to get them to understand the value and importance of wildlife, what they can do for the climate, how they can improve and enjoy that green space. But it is, it's, it's very much not about people like me there, standing in the green space and saying, oh, this is brilliant. It's about working with those networks. So it could be SAW, it could be Active Burn Grieve in relation to Parkwood Springs. And it's that breadth of provision. So it's not, and this is one of the things we talked a lot with holiday and food activity and also the green prescribing grants that we're involved in. How do we get that spread? Because it is wondrous to hear about a scone being made on that journey. But someone else may just want to go on a canal boat and go up and down an accessible canal boat. Someone maybe really, you know, thrill seeking and adrenaline, maybe where it's at. That's maybe what they want to do and they want to go off climbing or running or on a bike or on a horse or, you know, all these different route ways. And so I suppose it's really, it is, and it's intrinsically about listening and then trying to realise when you're not reaching all the community and how we can target and work on that. And ultimately then that's going to those groups and organisations and building trust. And I suppose that comes back to the, the funding cycle and those long-term relationships being built up around green spaces, around people that are using them and not using them. And that is a, you know, it's a three-year process that. And it is about those strange novel events. So that's why things like schools cross country and bringing those to green spaces is really important. Because it gets lots of different people, pride, excitement. It's about lantern festivals, it's about lighting up hills, it's about mellas, it's about ghoulas. But then around that, there's that education. But it's really complex and yeah, it's, we at times have to challenge our own friends that, you know, you're not everyone and we're not expecting you to be, but how do we make everyone welcome? Sure, anyone else?
I just wanted to pick up, and I know this is not about half at all, but actually the really interesting thing, Lucy, about half last year, the two or three, four groups that actively took their kids out to the peaks, stayed out overnight, were actually from Fervale and Burn Grieve. And actually we need to spread that, the kind of excitement that they did have there to all the parts of the city to say, you, you need to do stuff outside the city as well. The funding's there to take you. And actually I think through some of that funding, those community groups that, that we, that you described and we traditionally think about in that space, proactively engaged with an adventure company to go and do that, to develop their knowledge and understanding and, and actually really take some, some of the, actually some of the kids in Burn Grieve got the most exciting programmes. Because actually we've got some amazing community workers down there who really use the funding to push the boundaries for their kids. So going back to the measuring, I think, I think, I wasn't on the panel, but colleagues here were on the panel. Most of the funding went into organisations who were working with diverse groups that, they were, they were being proactive in the types of communities that they were working in. I think, I think measuring is a challenge and it's got to be proportionate to, you know, we're probably talking about some really small organisations and actually the measuring, some of the measuring is, some of the, is harder than some of the engagement, if we're frank. And, and a challenge, but also needs to be proportionate to the size of the, the funding as well. But I'm sure you would argue that as well.
Just very quickly add to that, there is both local and national evaluation as part of the ICS bid. So we have got Sheffield University doing a lot of work for us.
Okay. Finally Bernard, I'm making this the last, last one, members.
Yes, I will be very, very quick. I'm Chair of the Pondrosa Nature Group we set up during the pandemic. It's been very difficult to actually engage the whole community. But we found what it has done over time, it's brought people with really severe mental health problems out with us, even if it's for short periods of time, I think it's been very useful for the community. What would have helped our group and continued to help our group would be some, because most of these groups are actually volunteers, is a, is a, something like a, you know, Green Space Forum. I understand there is one, but during the pandemic it stopped working and they're reluctant, they seem to be reluctant to meet online. That would be really useful because those are the places someone can go and say, we've got a great idea, how do we put a funding bid in to get, in to do this? So, you know, so we need that sharing space. And I understand it's not happening because somebody isn't confident with social media.
Okay.
John, is there some of that's on your?
Yeah, so that is organised from within Parks, Woodlands and Countryside, which is the, who I work for. I would share your observation. I think it would be really valid and it's been hard to communicate with our friends of green space. And I think it's been more important because we have been busier than ever. So I think, yeah, I'd agree with that. I don't know the specific details about why we're not doing it, but I, I would agree it's something we should be trying really hard to bring back. So yeah, I'd sort of, you know, I can feed back to people that clearly that question's been raised and I agree.
I think it may answer the questions, you know, people have had, you know, they want a directory of things. Things, things move so quickly, you know, groups set up with a group, people who are really enthusiastic, but the key person suddenly gets a proper job, as I call it, and, and then the group collapses. So I think a, you know, the continuity would be through a green, green spaces forum.
Just to follow up on that, it's not, it's not green specific, but I think there are two other sources of support. One is Lewis or speaking to Lewis and Lewis's organisation in the, in the development part of Lewis's organisation. And the second is to wander down the road to zest because through people keeping well, they do have grant pots and, and I am asking them to work with local small organisations, doesn't matter whether it's green or not. So there are two other sources of support. It might not be green orientated, but it'd be more generic.
Yeah, just to add to that point, I was going to say, no, no, it's all right. And yeah, I think VAS, although we, we're the infrastructure organisation for voluntary sector organisations in Sheffield, there's a lot of community and voluntary organisations that aren't there. And that's through no, that's no one's fault. It's just difficult sometimes to be aware of what's happening. So yeah, I'd be happy to connect, be happy to support. And I think, as Emma said, there's, there's a couple of ways that we could probably work together to move things forward. But yeah, I'll give you my email address, no problem.
It's in the paper, it's in the paper, your email address, I think.
Okay, members, I'm, I'm going to have to bring this to a close. So can we, well, can I first of all thank everyone? I had a list of everybody's names, but I can't say everybody's name, please, from here. Emma, John, Lewis, Sue, Amy and Owen, all for coming along. I think it's been a useful, productive exercise for us, you know, particularly as, as elected, you know, local councillors basically, to, to understand what is out there and what the, some of the, the opportunities, but also the, the, you know, the, the dangers basically of, of, you know, relying on the funding being there and everything carrying on as normal, but also the opportunities on, on developing the, the strong connections that there are already. So I'm looking to members now, I think that they, we're being asked to basically note the report. We're a bit, I mean, I don't know whether you want to, I don't think, there's not much more we can do other than note because we're, we're not quite sure what, you know, this is going to be the penultimate meeting of the scrutiny committee in its current form. And we're not quite sure what form we will come back in once the new governance arrangements are. So there may be an opportunity to, to, to come back, you know, at a future point, but we're not quite sure how at the moment. Sorry about that. But thank you all for, for coming along and fielding all the questions and so on. So members, if we can.
Swap people over.
Yeah, we're. We can move on to item eight on the, on the, in the pack.
And did you also say a quick minute, a quick two-minute comfort break, Chair, did you say?
Sorry, Gary.
Did you say two minutes comfort break?
Where can I use?
Two minutes comfort break, did you say?
It, it, one minute. So we said at the start of the meeting that I would take the two public questions that relate to a gender item on the Adult Disfluency and Cleft Lip and Palate Service Update and Consultation Plan. Now, just before we deal with, with that item. So I, I underst, so I understand that Kirsten would like to go first. Am I right? Oh, I got that wrong. Who wanted to go first, Kirsten?
Yes, if that's all right. I've got a train to catch, but.
Yeah, Kirsten, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. For, for those of you who don't know me, my name's Kirsten and I work for STAMA, which is also known. which is also known as the British Stammering Association. So I'm here representing STAMA today. This issue has been talked about in a few meetings now, so I wanted to register that we're very grateful to the Children's Trust in Sheffield for overturning their earlier decision to close the stammering service to new adult referrals from January 2022, and for committing to continue to take new referrals until there's suitable alternative provision in place in Sheffield. We're also very grateful to the CCG for inviting STAMA to join the task and finish group, and we've accepted that invitation with enthusiasm. And, but although we are taking an active role in the consultation, the inner workings of the processes in the CCG aren't easy for outsiders to understand. So the longer term processes and procedures can still feel somewhat opaque. It's not easy to understand what the vision for the further process is. So my two questions today really relate to trying to make sure that we understand some of the points in the document pack. So on page 26 of the documents pack for this meeting, it states that key wider stakeholders also need to be heard to ensure that possible future options can be considered for service delivery. So our question is, who are those key wider stakeholders referred to in addition to the people who are already involved in those conversations? And on page 27 of the documents, it states, "The outcome of the further involvement will enable us to consider appropriate next steps in line with our statutory obligations and moral duties, which will lead to the development of possible future options for consideration." And it's not clear to STAMA what the, what, what appropriate next step really means, like, what are the alternatives that that might be, what might appropriate next steps look like? So there are questions.
Would you like to, um, respond to that, Kate? Or could you introduce yourself first?
Yep, hello, my name's Kate Gleev, Deputy Director of Commissioning at the CCG. And apologies, we had anticipated that Lucy Etheridge was going to be here, um, tonight. However, her partner has just had a positive diagnosis of COVID. So we decided that it might not be appropriate for her to attend. However, she is watching, so if there's any specific questions around kind of consultation and engagement, then she will try and message me some of the answers, so we're gonna try and do a bit of virtual management if we can. So in terms of your answering your first question, um, as you know, both the CCG and, um, provider organisations, hospitals, um, have legal duties to ensure that people who use the services or their representatives are involved in the planning of services. So in this sense, the key wider stakeholders include people who currently use the service, people who may use the service in the future, so those who are currently teenagers and might transition onto an adult pathway at a point in time. People who you will be working with, who engage with local and national charities and may require signposting to the services in the future. It could also include people whose care may be managed elsewhere within secondary care, but could require support in the future. So for example, people who are attending the long COVID clinic now, who, who may have, may not have had issues in the past and it's triggered. And people who may be receiving support in primary care and could require a future referral into the service. People who are overseen by the Sheffield team but live in the wider area. So the team does treat some people in Rotherham, Doncaster, for example, so there's some implications there. Not least the staff who work in the service or who could work in the service in the future. Health professionals who may refer patients into the service, as well as, um, obviously you, as local politicians and local community groups. And in terms of your, sorry, I was just trying to remember, you've just asked your next question at the same time. So in terms of the, what the appropriate next steps might be, it's really important that the process that we follow is, we ensure is robust. And so whilst we've done the review of existing patient experience data, which you've helped with, it was clear that the sample size was really quite small. So whilst it provided a valuable and helpful insight, actually, we need to, um, understand from a wider cohort of the population that have used the service or who could use the service in the future, so that we can be confident that the data that we're using is comprehensive and that it provides a representative sample of people's, of patients' views and experiences. It will also help us, give the, give us the opportunity to hear more about some of the types of service that we might be able to offer, um, so for example, that move to telehealth and how that can impact. This information will help us to establish what the appropriate next steps are. So the first of those next steps is to develop an involvement plan, which works with all of those wider stakeholders to do that wider testing in terms of what, you know, what is it, the wider cohort have experience, what do they need? What outcomes do they want to achieve? And then that will help us to determine what potential options might look like going forwards.
Okay, th- thank you, Kate. So, um, you, you, I understand you, you've got to get off anyway, but we've obviously got the, the item. So I, um, I'll, um, go over to Isabel, if you could like, thanks for attending, Kate. If you'd like to put your, you read out your question, um.
That one, yeah, okay. So I'm, I was the clinical lead in Disorders of Fluency, which is stammering, from 1993 to 2021. I retired last, at the end of last July. So I know the service very well and I've worked with lots and lots of people over the years. I'm very appreciative of the fact that the Children's Hospital Trust's executive team have decided to reopen the service to those over 16 who stammer and will continue to take referrals, um, as stated on page 25, until there is suitable adult provision in place in Sheffield. And I'll be happy to be involved in a task and finish group organised by the CCG in conjunction with the Children's Trust, as I hope we, we all want to ensure that adults who stammer can receive the best possible NHS service. My offer was accepted by the Speech Therapy Service to return part-time from retirement for three months in order to see the people aged 16 plus whose referrals were rejected last year when the service was closed from April to August. So over those three months, I offered appointments to 15 adult patients according to their expressed wishes. So some people, it was just one appointment, others, they needed a full batch of appointments. And all of those appointments were through telehealth with video appointments. And I've been working that way throughout the pandemic. I asked for and gained valuable feedback from these patients on various aspects of their experiences, both of stammering and of the services offered. And several, several of them are happy to speak directly to the CCG as part of any further patient involvement. Previous to the pandemic, all people who stammer, whether they're children, teenagers or over 16s, were seen at a community clinic separate from the main children's hospital site. This, whilst it does say children's hospital on it, it's not obviously a children's building. It has a waiting area that's for teenagers and older people that's slightly separate from the main waiting area where the children might be. And we've been, always been careful to make sure that the clinic rooms are suitable for all ages. So my questions are, and this is to the CCG and Children's Trust, "In the process of looking for the best NHS service to Sheffield, to Sheffield over 16s who stammer, can you clarify whether all options will be considered, including the status quo?" I ask that because the Children's Hospital Trust are quoted on page 26 as being of the view that it is not in the best interest of adults to be seen in a paediatric setting and care should be transitioned to adult services as per other services. So it does appear as though the status quo is being discounted right from the start of this review. Is that the case? And my second question is to this scrutiny committee. I have found it very helpful to have the independent oversight of this scrutiny committee throughout this review of the Speech and Language Therapy Service. May I seek reassurance that this kind of oversight and scrutiny will continue after the transition to the modern committee system? Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel. Before, uh, be, be, before I, we, we have the responses, I must apologize to Council Vic Bowden, she wanted to make a declaration of interest.
Yes, well, an apology for not saying it before, I'm still coming out of my midwinter hibernation. As before, I have known Isabel for now more than 30 and a half years, because she, she dealt with my son when he was, I don't know, nine or 10, something like that. And because of that, I've also been a trustee of the British Stammering Association on a couple of, a couple of chunks of time in the past as well. So apologies again, Chair.
Thank, thank you. So, um, the, the question is to, to the, the CCG and the, and the Children's Trust. So I'm, I'm just wondering whether you'd like to make a response now, while we're dealing with the public question section, really?
Yep, so, um, we are in the process of reviewing all possible options on how the service can be provided in the future. We aren't currently in a position to know if the status quo will be one of the final options, as we haven't yet finished that review. All options will need to be thoroughly evaluated and will be shaped by the engagement with patients. And you will be part of that if you carry on with the, the task and finish group, both of you, and other representatives. And also part of the input into the options appraisal. We'll only proceed with viable, sustainable options that meet the needs of the patients, because that is part of our, um, legal requirements to do that.
Dr Jeff Perrin, well, let's introduce yourself, sorry, because I shouldn't have done that earlier on. And, and would you, is there anything you want to say in response, thanks?
Thank you very much, yes, my name's Dr Jeff Perrin, I'm Medical Director at Sheffield Children's NHS Foundation Trust, which over sees or which, which provides this service at the moment. I, we will work with the CCG to look at all options that are available and will be, as we have shown, um, in sort of earlier parts of this, we will be cognizant of, um, those options and will appraise them internally as well. So we'll be working closely with the CCG.
Okay, thank you for that. In response to the second question, um, we, the, the question, the question's a difficult one for us to answer, because, uh, as you, you probably appreciate, that the council is, in addition to all the, um, you know, the, the, the re- reservation as a result of the integrated care system, you know, that's, that's going through at the moment. The council is also involved in, in revising, reviewing its own governance, governance procedures. And, um, as, as we speak, we're not quite sure on, um, where scrutiny will sit within the council's own procedures. We have, however, um, set up, um, a, um, a, uh, a working group which is meeting next Tuesday, the first of February, to look at how, um, the Sheffield place scrutiny function will fit, or to monitor how that will fit in the developing, um, uh, you know, the, how, how the ICS develops, once, once the legislation, because it's been put on hold, you probably were at the moment, how it fits in there as well. Also, Emma sent a copy of your question to, um, the Chair and Deputy Chair of the Governance Committee here. And can you just, I'll bring in Emma for, for the response, because she's got it in front of her, I haven't got it.
Just to say that, yes, we've passed on your comments to the, the Chair and Deputy Chair of the Governance Committee. We don't know yet what, um, what the system will look like next year. What we do know is that our statutory health scrutiny functions will be covered by that system. And the Governance Committee is currently kind of working out what that will look like. But we will, we will fulfil our statutory duties in terms of health scrutiny through the system, however it may look.
Which I think that, that, the, the, the fact that you've, you've said that you found that the, the role of scrutiny helpful assists us in, in the, um, position that we've taken as accounts. So thanks for bringing that, coming along, being that to us. Thanks ever so much.
Chair, can I, Gary?
Gary.
Thanks, Chair, can I just, Isabel did say that she would like to be on the task and finish group, and that didn't come through, and I just wondered if that, if the CCG can answer that for us?
Yeah, so we've asked Isabel, Kirsten and another member of the public who has previously asked a question at this meeting and has been working with us. And all three, I'm pleased to say, have accepted. So we are just working through the process of various admin bits that we need to sort out. The date of the next meeting will shortly be out with you.
Okay, yeah, okay, so, um, we're actually, can, can we move over to actually presenting the update? And I, I take it that, Kate, do you want to lead on that? Yep.
So I'm assuming that everybody's read the paper, so I was just gonna, um, pick out a couple of points, if that's okay with people, and then we can move it on to, um, the questions. So as you know, the trust decided to, um, not to cease provision of the service for adults, um, back in, in January. So the service is continuing for the foreseeable future. Isabel's talked about the number of patients that have been seen, um, that we've talked about in previous meetings. We have, as I referenced earlier, reviewed all of the existing information that we have had, so feedback from, um, patients on services over the last three years. And the initial, uh, kind of findings from that is actually, we don't actually know very much about what people need from the service and what outcomes they want. We've heard very clearly that there is a need for a service and that there is, you know, that is of significant value to people. But in terms of how they want that service to be delivered or what outcomes they want to achieve as a result of going through that service, we have very little information. So we'll be, we will be focusing on, um, that as part of developing our involvement plan, which will take us through the next phase. And as we've said, we've now got some patient and public representatives on the task and finish group that will help us to deliver, develop that involvement plan and work through that plan with us, to the point where we can identify some options. Jeff, was there anything else you wanted to add?
Thank you very much. Only a little, which is really just to, to highlight the, you know, trying to, to collect the appropriate and, um, significant enough data to actually be able to make a, a reasonable decision on this. I think that's the, alongside those stakeholders who are involved in the task and finish group. So, you know, just to highlight that how limited the data is that we have up to this point.
Okay, okay, um, so I'll admit two questions from members, unless there's nothing you, you wanted to add, have you? Okay, this point, so I'm opening it up to questions from, from members now. And I don't, oh, yeah, Gary, yeah.
Chair, I, I just think it's, uh, it's just a comment, really. I'm really pleased that, uh, you know, with, with the public and doctors going out and, and doing what they did last year and when we went through all the process, um, last couple of years. I mean, we were a shock to the system that this was going to close down and then move off to wherever. And where we are now is, you know, the CCG has listened and listened to members of the public, come back for the service and this, hopefully, over the next six months to a year, it's gonna come back and refine and, and see what's, what'll get out of this. But I'm really pleased that we've all come to. But I'm really pleased that we've all come to this place in time. Thanks, Chair.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from members? Wait, Ruth.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report. And like Isabel, I want to query the wording on page twenty-six. The trust is still of the view that it's not in the best interest of adults to be seen in a paediatric setting, and care should be transitioned to adult services. So, I mean, you've emphasised several times in what you've said how limited the data is so far, and how you want to gather more data, and you want to speak to more people, and a wider cohort of people, and you've initiated the task and finish group. So I'm slightly worried about how you're in a position where you're saying that, but you're also saying, you're also restating the position that this committee called into question at the outset of this whole dialogue last year. So I'm just wondering why you've sort of set that out in black and white again in this report, when you're at a stage where you're saying you need a lot more information? And yet that paragraph does seem to be saying this, you know, there's a decision made behind this, and reading that, it feels like you're not going to want to move from that decision at all. So I'm sure I'm reading it in a very pessimistic way, but that's my question, is where is this paragraph coming from? And just to take any misunderstanding out of it, I agree that seeing adult patients in a paediatric setting, physical, you know, physical setting is probably inappropriate. But Isabel's reference that the building is not one in which adults would feel that they're amongst children. So the wording of that paediatric setting, I think, is slightly moot, that's not the sort of hinge pin of the whole thing. It's the transitioning to adult services that was the whole crux of why we initiated this dialogue in the first place.
Okay, I think it's some reassurance that, I think, Ruth speaking for the scrutiny as a whole, scrutiny committee as a whole, I think, in seeking the reassurance about the transition, I think.
Yeah. Thank you for the question. Sheffield Children's is a paediatric trust. It is, the vast majority of the work that it does is for children and young people. The upper age that it reaches is variable, and I'm not going to get into the sort of details of that. And over the last sort of many years, working with Sheffield Teaching Hospital and with the CCG, we have worked to move paediatric services that were commissioned and undertaken by Sheffield Teaching into Sheffield Children's and vice versa. So that has been the route that we have gone through for a number of different services over a significant period of time, so that we can concentrate on our core business, and Sheffield Teaching and other Sheffield Health and Social Care in Sheffield can concentrate on theirs as well. So in principle, our basic principle is that adults should be cared for in an adult environment and by adult specialists. That's our sort of basic premise. What, in this case, we are willing to do, and that we have stated, is that we appreciate that the options haven't been developed and that there is a lack of information to provide those options, and we will look at all the options that are open. And if the outcome of this is that the preferred option is for no action to take, and/or, you know, to maintain the status quo, then we will look at that seriously in light of the, you know, the information that is provided to us. And as part of that, we have shown that, you know, you have seen over the last few months, that where, you know, concerns have been raised to us, that we are willing to change, and we are willing to take that into consideration and make changes that are appropriate. But what we are saying is that our general position is that adults are better looked after under adult services. What we aren't going to do, and we have clearly stated, is that we will not look to close this service unless, what we would be wanting to do is to move the service to an adult provider rather than to close it. So we're not going to let something get in the way there.
Okay. Bernard.
Yes, thank you for the report, and I'm delighted with the outcome. But this is further the question that's been asked here. Are there any obvious or sort of other routes that the service could be shunted to? For example, in head injury pathways that the hospital is engaged with, neurodevelopmental services, as it were, you know, sometimes it's, people have got a speech impediment because they've been born with it, or they've acquired it through a CVA or an accident. You know, though those services are provided for those people, from, you know, from the point that they had their accident in perpetuity, is there any way of sort of piggybacking, as it were, onto that service and make it more, you know, a more robust service?
That is a potential option. When we work to identify the options, we will have a list of options, and then we will thoroughly evaluate them against a set of criteria. So I can't at this stage say whether it would end up on a kind of a shortlist of options, but it is certainly something that we can look into. And going back to the involvement, it's not a group of patients or individuals that we've heard from so far. So we need to factor that into our involvement plan as to whether they've got some views, whether they've got some ideas, whether the staff that work with them have views and ideas, and make sure that we hear from them as well as the other groups that we have already talked about.
Thank you. Any other questions from members? If not, then can we agree to the recommendations which are, presumably to note the progress? Is it that I've lost the recommendation? Yeah, so are we happy to agree the recommendations, to note the progress of the report? I take it, Gary, do you want to say to me?
Just wondering, because he's going to transition committees after mayor chair, and I'm sure it's going to carry on in this kind of form, it's all transition committees. And I just wanted, are we going to ask for a report back?
Well, I'm not quite sure, because we're still not quite sure. It won't be transition committee, because a transition committee will be replaced by whatever the new structure is. But do you want to, I'll bring Emily in, because you can say it a lot better than I.
Just to say that we'll continue, we will need to continue to fulfil our statutory health scrutiny duties, so we'll stay in touch with the CCG as things develop and make sure it comes in an appropriate form to the appropriate place post-May.
Thanks for that, Chair, thanks.
So it will come back to, for scrutiny, scrutiny so wishes. But whether, you know, what the committee will be, we don't know yet. I know that's as clear as much. So on that basis, can I have an indication that we note the report? And thank both Kate and Jeff for coming along and responding to questions that we have. Okay. Happy with that? Thank you very much, members. Just checking whether or not the front door's locked. Agenda, and it's a draft work programme. Emily.
Okay. So there's only one formal meeting scheduled left for this municipal year. We have had a few, two and four emails trying to find a date. It was originally planned for the twenty-third of March, that's now full council. So what we're proposing is that we hold a meeting on Wednesday, the sixteenth of March, in the morning at ten o'clock. Is that, if that's okay for enough members, are we happy to go ahead and confirm that? It's been very, very difficult to find a date that doesn't clash with a formal meeting when we've got council chamber availability.
No, that's fine with me, I think, I mean, as long as, it's not a leaving party, is it?
Bring your own. And you will be able to send substitutes, as usual, if you can't make it. And so for the agenda for that meeting, we'll aim to bring an update on access to dental services, which I know you've been keen to hear about. We did circulate an update that we'd received from NHS England, which has got a bit of information in it there. So we're hoping that they'll be able to come. Also, if you recall, back in September, the CCG came on primary care hubs, the kind of capital transformation programme, they're about to go back out to formal consultation on that, so we'll need to come to talk to you about that programme. So we'll need to add that to the work programme for March. And hopefully the CCG's report back on, the scrutiny committee's report on continence services, the person who we need to speak to isn't able to attend in-person meetings, which is why we couldn't do it today, which I think is probably a good job, looking at the time. But hopefully, I think we should have some kind of hybrid capacity in the council chamber by then, so we should be able to do that. So happy to take any questions on all of that, or anything.
Sorry, Bernard, sorry.
Is this the point where we can ask about further issues that come to these meetings? On Channel Four in December, there was a World in Action programme that looked at the many problems faced by people with long-term health problems applying for personal independence payments. I'm just wondering if this is the appropriate forum to ask, for example, the local DWP, housing and social services and others that work, that come across these issues. You know, they are extremely serious. People have been barred from getting their payments because they've not had access to the internet, or they've not answered a letter when they find out actually the people have actually, somebody's actually died in their flat. And then this seems to me lots of things need to join up, so that we're not in that position, so people don't fall through the net and they get the support they need.
You seem to be asking two questions there, Bernard. One is, is this the forum, you know, it helps me to, whatever, the forum for that? And whether we can ask for that to be added to whatever our, whatever this committee's successor is to its work programme? Because we're not going to be...
Yeah, so I'm asking, is this the appropriate forum for this, for as to our question, what's going on with personal independent payments in Sheffield?
And whether, if it is, can we ask that whatever the new scrutiny...
Yeah, the new, whatever we are...
Do you want to respond to that, or do you want to just take it away and look at it?
Certainly, I can make note of it to kind of feed into next year's system. But also, I am aware that colleagues in the policy team are working on a poverty action plan, and this is the kind of thing that might be picked up under that, so I'll talk to them as well about whether there may already be things going on around this. So I'll flag it with them and ask them to give us any information that they have on that as well, because it may be that it is already being discussed in a different bit of the council, if that's okay.
Come in on this. I think Bernard raises a really good point, but he didn't mention the voluntary sector and the Citizens Advice Bureau in the city, and I think that they would be a very valid organisation to have some input. And if it's not going to come back here, and it's going to somewhere else, maybe that suggestion could be put forward for that as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Emily, have a go. Ruth, is it something else?
Yep, it's just thinking back to some not too ancient history, and the intervention that this committee made with regard to the minor injuries unit and walk-in centre. And they were given a stay of execution of, I believe, two years, which will have expired sometime, I'm trying to get my years in order, because Covid seems to have taken a year out of my memory. So I think that the arrangement that was agreed after this committee called in that would have expired in January twenty-one. So could we ask for an update on where those services are at, and if there's any further proposals to do anything with them, and whether there have in fact been any changes to the services that they're providing?
I mean, I'd certainly go along with that, yeah. I think if we can, yeah. Leave that with Emily, yeah. Any...
Francie. There's also disabled people against cuts in Sheffield, and I know they set up the on-the-record campaign for people trying to claim PIP and also going through the health assessments. And they set up a service to provide people with free recording equipment to record the interviews that they were having, because there's quite often, you know, major disparities between written reports that people receive and what they've actually said over the phone. So I think, you know, there's more to it than just sort of people not necessarily been able to get online or not been able to access it. You know, there's big problems with the system itself, which I'm sure CAB would be able to tell you about, and disabled people against cuts will probably have experience of the impact of PIP on particularly disabled people, people with long-term health conditions.
Okay. I'd just like to make a comment about CAB. At the moment, there is no face-to-face consultations with CAB, they do it on the telephone, which isn't helpful. I've had complaints from Chapel Green Advice Centre, the fact that just over fifty percent of the people that are attending there, because they are the only place that's doing face-to-face, over fifty percent of the people, can't remember the exact figure, are from outside of Chapel Green. They're from all over the city. They're being advised by telephone, but if you need a face-to-face, and this is to do with what Bernard asked about, Chapel Green is the only place to go to. So it's, you know, the CAB at the moment isn't working. So I'd just like to make that as a comment.
Both. Comment noted. Okay, so... Are we okay then with the draft work, we've dealt with the draft work programme, we're happy with that? Which finally leads us to the date of the next meeting, which is March the...
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, ten o'clock, a morning meeting, remember?
We'll send out an invite tomorrow.
Okay. So with that, can I thank you all for your attendance and your contributions? See you on the sixteenth.